There we go. All right. I call the Wednesday, February first, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting to order. The council members and I met at five P. M. in the sixth floor council conference room for a briefing to discuss tonight's agenda. Please note that tonight's agenda was amended to increase the executive session time from thirty minutes to forty-five minutes. At five thirty, we moved down here to the first floor chambers to conduct the council meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us either in person or participate remotely through Zoom or view via B. Cat. First up tonight, we have the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler. Mayor Wheeler is here at the moment. Mayor is not present at the moment. So I believe we're able to move on to the consent agenda. We can come back to that item. So we'll go ahead to the consent agenda, and we have Deputy Clerk Laurie Smith filling in tonight.
Good evening. So under the consent agenda, we have claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. Check numbers four zero one, four seven, two through four zero one, seven, three, seven, and electronic fund transfers. V three, six, six, nine, seven through V three, six, eight, two, eight, in the grand total amount of six million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and six cents. Regular payroll payout for pay period ending January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Retiree payroll for pay period ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents. Or B, minutes of meeting, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item four C, minutes of study session, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item four D, professional services agreement with Parametrics Incorporated for the design of the Francis Street Outfall Improvements Project. Item four E, contract modification agreement number three with Herrera Environmental Consultants for the Pine Road Stormwater Improvements Project. Item four F, amendment number two to the interlocal agreement between the Transportation Benefit District of Bremerton and the Washington State Department of Licensing. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any one of these specific items? So come up to the podium, or we'll look for hands on Zoom real quick. See any hands on Zoom? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and go to the council for a motion. That's a member Dennehy.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, we have a second by Councilmember Frye. All right, with that, I call for the question.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And we'll now, seeing Mayor Wheeler, we'll go ahead and go back to item number three, the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
Council President. My laptop just crashed again.
Okay, well, let's pause for a moment. We'll figure out I T. issues. Is the Zoom meeting public broadcast crashing or just the slides? Okay.
Okay. Well, good evening, council. We'll just we'll give Dave a little time here, of course. The one, one thing I think we've all learned from the pandemic, especially with technology, is we, we offer grace, you know, we just and it's, it's a technology has been a great, it's been a great outcome, you know, as far as some of the things we can take away to embrace and harness, but there's also still difficulties with it. And it really doesn't replace in person, but keep business moving, we we sure are, we're utilizing that. I know you are too. Just a few items tonight, too, by the way. Pump stations. Yeah, we've got, I've got a pump station briefing I'll give you, and you'll, you'll see why, even though this work is very important, you'll see why this one's got a couple of extra features to it that you might, you might think are interesting. All right. Breach and infrastructure, so this is a big one coming our way. Washington Eleventh, as you can see, designs completed just at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. And this is just one, one picture of the roundabout, and you can see just a short, just a little bit of heading north on the Washington Boulevard, Washington Avenue, this wide sidewalks, the re- repaving. Of course, extra lighting, a lot of nice features coming our way. Construction spring of two thousand and twenty-three, completion of this project by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. So exciting project coming in, it's really going to improve, I think, traffic flow in that area, and of course, the walkability and and cycling also for that area. Next slide, please. So this is, you know, I wanted to brief you a little bit on this. If you'll just this is obviously flood mitigation project. But if you look down at these streets and where the work's going to be occurring, there has been a lot, a lot of issues over the year with years with flooding. And so this is a long, it's a long overdue project. We've made it a priority to get this fixed, and there are, there are several houses in the Eagle Avenue, the Robin Avenue area that are going to really appreciate these improvements. And again, it's long overdue, but we look forward to correcting these long, very long historic issues that have plagued that area. So, yeah, that's just a little example, a little picture of the construction project, so if folks see that, they'll know what's going on. All right, next slide. All right, pump station. So this is up near Schley Canyon in that area. And obviously, you can see the explanation, it's next to the Bremen and Ice Arena near the YMCA facility. But the two, two features on this, besides just being a good infrastructure project, support, you know, a critical service that we provide. It also is going to have a public restroom associated with it. And one of the two, two things that will be important with this restroom is, one, it'll, it'll serve the community members who use Adrona Trails. And also it'll support bridge to bridge walk that we are, we are promoting. So it's just a little piece of infrastructure that's gonna just, again, make that walk a little more pleasant and make the whole area just, yeah, it's just going to be a good project, so. And that's it. And I believe that's it. Dave, let's take a look, see if we have another slide. That is it, council. Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wheeler. All right, next up on our agenda is item five, public recognition. As noted, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any city-related item that's not already listed on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you want to speak up on, please come up to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom, and we will recognize you. We just ask that you state your name for use in the record and request if you live or work in the city, and that you limit your comments to three minutes or less, and we'll have a timer system to make sure everyone's treated equally. And so with that, I'll open up public recognition and start right here at the podium in the room. Please go ahead.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council, and happy Black History Month. As you all know, I'm Erin Haile, and I'm the new Executive Director of the Downtown Bremerton Association, and I want to thank you kindly for designating the funds for this position and giving the D. B. A. an opportunity through Main Street Accreditation to get a leg up in the community. I would like to provide every new and existing business important resources, including which number to call, for example, if a homeless person happens to be sleeping in their doorway. And I would also love to be directed to the best department that knows of every new business that happens to come our way so that the D. B. A. can properly welcome them to the community. So you can, if you don't mind sharing and directing all resources to Erin at downtownbremerton.org, and that's Erin with two Ns. In speaking with a few of the downtown Bremerton businesses, obviously, their number one complaint is parking. They say not enough street parking, they have a fear of safety while parking in the garage. And they have a fear of what parking might look like once Quincy Fair is completed. And some businesses have shared that employees of other businesses are unfortunately parking in the short-term or temporary parking in front of their business. So in speaking through some solutions with Cory at Gastropub, we thought of an idea to work through kind of some of the fears of the parking garage was to create some videos or some photo profiles of the security officer that's now on staff and the improvements on lighting and just to shift some perceptions in the community. We also had some ideas of creating kind of a GoPro experience, comparing what it's like to park maybe down the street in downtown Bremerton and the time it takes to get to your destination versus parking at the mall in that giant parking lot and walking to the front door of your destination. I will be commencing a business-to-business newsletter within the downtown corridor, sharing various ideas, highlighting kind of parking perception and how it really needs to change with business owners and their customers and changing that negative into a positive. And as well as encouraging employees to park in parking garages or side streets in order to open up temporary parking in front of businesses. I would, I would love to point out businesses of note as well as some events coming up. Obviously, the mercantile just opened, and in talking with Jimmy Harris about his business, he's so excited to train all of his employees.
Just a ten-second.
Oh, sorry.
To wrap up, sorry.
Um, to be ambassadors of the downtown corridor, and so he's given him a tour of all of the businesses. I wanted to highlight Ballast Books that carries these cozy socks at Big Bremerton, just in time for Saint Patrick's Day, which will, will have a parade on March eleventh, Green Drinks is next Thursday. And for this Friday is First Friday. So anyway, I just want to encourage everyone to support the downtown business corridor, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Haile, and I know it's been a longtime goal of both council administration to assist in creating your position, and it is fantastic to see that it's been filled, and thank you for the feedback for local businesses to council administration and how the city can support them. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we'll go to the next person in the room. Please go ahead.
Hello, council. Mayor Weller. I want to thank the mayor for his report. Really appreciated hearing the updates this going on in the city. Just a couple of things I wanted to address, and I'll get out of your hair pretty quickly here. First, my name's Michael Ellington. I'm a Reverend Pastor of New Horizon Ministries here in Bremerton. I live here in Bremerton off John Carlson. A couple of things I want to bring to the city's attention that I'd like to see done. Have some emphasis put on in the city is one sidewalks in front of all the schools, I think is important. I live by Esquire Hills. There's no sidewalk there. There are children that walk to school, and I think they should, you know, have a safe passage there and make sure there's, you know, sidewalks extending in front of the school and, and at least, you know, a block or so in either direction. And, you know, have the city put some, some money towards that. I like the, the mayor's proposal of what's going on with, you know, Washington and Eleventh, and the bathrooms was interesting to see the two, two-point-seven million up there on the screen there, and I'd like to see the city put some emphasis towards permanent bathroom facilities for our, our, our houseless population, and I do appreciate the ten thousand dollars you guys put towards, you know, provided for, for their, you know, bathroom facilities, but I think they, they need some permanent, you know, accessibility as well. Last thing, I think District Six, Ms. Mockler, I think you spoke at the last, like, open meeting like this about the transit dollar ride service and the money that Kitsap Transit's, you know, putting towards that. I'm wrapping up. I would like to see the, the city council maybe support one of our local transportation companies gather together, grow together as they, you know, do provide transportation and maybe, you know, suggest them to Kitsap Transit as a dollar ride service for the Bremerton area. Transit has always been an issue of mine when I got installed as pastor. First thing I did was move my services to Saturdays because there's no bus service on Sundays. And so it's that important to me that, you know, I kind of broke with tradition, and I get a lot of funny eyes from some of the other pastors because of that. So, yeah, let's just have a little bit of thought towards equity for, for the less fortunate, and again, I appreciate all that, all of you guys are doing the hard work that you're doing and everything, and I'll get out of your hair. So thank you.
Thank you so much for your service to the community, and, and thanks for all those excellent suggestions. Much appreciated. We have another person in the room walking up to the podium. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Joe Walter. Is there a countdown clock somewhere? Just look at? Just a light, okay. I was here three weeks ago and embarrassed myself. I was here with the four other people. We were going to talk to you, and it was a study session night, so they went home. And we couldn't make it the following week, and they can't make it today. So I just want to share, maybe they'll come another time. It, it is a story of what's happened to my daughter, who is severely disabled, and her care provider, who is brown. And this experiences that she has had while taking my white daughter out for a walk in our community. In the course of a month, on at least three occasions, she had other white people walk up to her and somehow ask the question, like, is she okay? Is the little disabled girl okay? Now, I've never been questioned. None of her white care providers have ever been questioned, and she felt we all felt pretty confident that it had to do with the fact that she didn't look like the mother or a family member, but it's inappropriate, and it made her feel very uncomfortable, like, how can she do her job? When someone came right up to her, you know, she was putting Claire, my daughter, in the car, and someone's like right there, right at the door, so that she really, in that moment, had to think, what if this was somebody who was here to hurt her? Would I be able to, like, pick her up and run with her? So all of that said, in order to express what it is that people experience in this community, cultural problems in our community that white people aren't going to know about. And the work that you're doing to, to try and fix React, get the, the the office that the mayor is establishing, that work that's going on. Keep up with it and get it sorted out because we really need it here. And I want to support the, the toilet discussion. I'm really glad to hear we're going to be getting some permanent stuff and that we're thinking that way. And I'm going to ask somebody later to tell me which department did the ten thousand dollars go to, so we can follow up and see what's going to happen with that for the temporary. And also to amplify the message that I'm a little confused about what's happening with the rideshare, but they've got it in South Kitsap. We don't have it here. G. Two is a resource. As they pursue that, I hope you'll support G. Two in providing that service for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, and I want to encourage you, folks can always email the city, especially the city council, anytime at city.council.c i.bremerton.wadi.us. And so we can always get questions, questions answered. And just one of your points, I know we had the joint retreat, council mayor and judge as well this past weekend, and race equity, we did spend a considerable amount of time discussing and think we have a path forward, so. Much appreciated. Anyone else for public comment? And just to check that we will be discussing the item on the library later, but if it's a separate.
This is separate. Hi, mayor and council. My name is Lisa Luchuga. I'm a resident of Bremerton and also the Chair of the Housing and Homelessness Coalition. And I just want to thank you for promoting Project Connect, which was excellent last week. Anna, thank you for sharing the spectrum of public participation. I have a better one for you. And just thank you for supporting the community in that effort. It's a good service to the people who are unsheltered or vulnerable in our community. Much appreciation. Thanks.
Thank you for your thank you, and great to hear it was a success. Please go ahead.
Hi, Jane Rebalauski. I'm a resident of Bremerton. The Downtown Business Association is talking about lack of parking. I think we still have those kind of sad-looking on-street parking, eating areas that look pretty rundown. And if we get them back up on the sidewalk, now that we can be a little closer and open up that parking, they're looking pretty raggy, so maybe we can take care of that. And the other thing, I just can't wait until we actually have public toilets for our people who are unhoused. I mean, we're spending millions for bridge walkers, ten thousands drop in the bucket for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and Mayor Director Nucky, do you want to quickly mention the streeteries? As a, up to you, not in worries. Just because I know that's, I know that's in the works.
Yeah, you bet. So there's, there were four streeteries that were put in place under the rules that were established during the pandemic. One of those, actually, the one on Fourth Street by the rocks, he was actually removed last week, I believe, earlier this week. And the, the other three are still remaining. We're in the process right now of developing a policy for a permanent streetery, and the, the rules would be quite a bit different for the, for the new streeteries, but we, we don't want to really pull the rug out from underneath the existing businesses. And so we're going to try to work with them as we develop the policy and then move that forward. We're actively working on that.
Thank you so much. Anybody else for public recognition? And see any hands on Zoom? All right, we'll go to the conduit with Marlon Cameron. Please go ahead.
Good evening, City Council and the mayor. Hope your day is going well. Just wanted to talk about initiative that many of us are trying to get pushed through as a bill. Only five percent of us have acquiesce, access to frequent transportation here in Kitsap County. And so I just want to bring that attention to city council and to the mayor as this language and advocacy comes out that you would support getting dollars to come into Kitsap County so that we can increase that transportation. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank you for all the work that you've done in helping to purchase Mills Crossing. I know it's still in the works, but that commitment of five hundred thousand dollars is very important, and so we're very appreciative of seeing that effort. And then I just wanted to give you a few updates. Tomorrow, the conduit is having a legislative roundup, where we'll have from one to five P. M. Someone will be coming on from immigration, at two P. M. prison reform, three P. M. housing from the Washington Low Income Housing Allowance, at four P. M. housing and homelessness advocacy days, and Resident Action Project, and then at five P. M. transportation equity. And then also this Saturday is Transit Equity Day. It's Rosa Parks' birthday. New Horizon Ministries, Kitsap Black Student Union, G. Two and the Conduit will be having an event at New Horizon Ministries from two to four. The good mayor is going to proclaim that day Transit Equity Day. We're going to feed folks. Kitsap Black Student Union will provide information, and they're going to put on a skit for us. And so all are welcome to attend. We think this is really important and definitely having our youth, who are our future, to get active and get involved. The last thing I'll mention is our Hispanic family is suffering some racist issues. This Friday, there will be a town hall in Polesbo to talk about that and to elevate the things that are going on there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, for that input and those updates. And on Mills Crossing, I'll mention the mayor and two council members got to take a tour Monday. We talked about it in the pre-meeting briefing, and I think we have fingers crossed that all goes ahead smoothly. Anyone else for public recognition? All right, seeing none, go ahead and close recognition and go to general business.
First order under general business is approve a contract modification number two to the Goods and Services Agreement with At Work Commercial Enterprises LLC for landscaping, maintenance, and services. The presenter tonight is Internal Services Manager, Chris Motter.
All right, welcome, Mr. Motter. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, Council President, City Council Members, Mayor, and others. I am here to present the Contract Modification Agreement Number Two with At Work Commercial Enterprises LLC. At Work Commercial Enterprises is the city's landscape maintenance and services provider under Lance, under City Contract Agreement Number six-two-four-four. They maintain twenty-four city properties for many different city departments and divisions. They have held this contract since two thousand and twenty-one. Within this proposed contract modification is the addition of three city locations that staff had identified that require landscape maintenance and services. These are Fire Station Two at five zero zero five Kitsap Way, Fire Station Three at three zero three one Olympus Drive, and at the city-owned landscape areas located at six oh six Burwell Street. These three areas are shown on the landscape location maps and marked as locations R. S. and T. The funds for the new added locations service costs are within the two thousand and twenty-three budget and will be budgeted for the remaining term of the contract. This service amount is twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents annually for these three new locations. Please note that this Contract Modification Agreement Number Two was previously presented to the City Council Study Session in the Public Works Committee and included a proposed cost for services increase of all locations. This has since been rescinded and is revised to reflect only the add of these three new locations. I will answer any questions you may have on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Motter. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Check on Zoom. Oh, yes, please, Ms. Rebalauski.
I'm a little bit concerned that we're doing landscaping for the six oh six apartment buildings. I understand we own the underlying land, but they pay zero taxes, and they don't have to pay any taxes for twelve full years. Seems to me that they could pick up the trash and do their own landscaping.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on this item? And we'll double-check any hands on Zoom. Yes, looks like there's one. Yes, Marlon Cameron, please go ahead.
I just wanted to echo that sentiment. If that is indeed true, then I do not believe the city should be picking up the tab for that.
So sorry, Mr. Cameron, the microphone volume's coming in a little soft. Do you mind repeating that louder if possible?
What I said was, if what Jane just said is true, then I want to elevate her comment there that I do not believe the city should be picking up the tab for that.
Perfect. Gotcha. Love that time. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the council for a motion. That's a member Mockler.
Thank you. Prove to approve the Contract Modification Agreement Number Zero Two with At Work Commercial Enterprises LLC and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Dennehy. With a motion and a second, we're open for discussion. Councilmember Mockler?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Motter. I hope that you are well. Excellent. Excellent. So when you presented this at the study session last week, it was, had a fiscal impact of $33,677.16 and was going to cover the, the two fire stations and 606 Burwell. And it was in response to a letter from Mr. John Song, who is the Bellevue owner of At Work or manager, whichever, asking for an increase due to increased cost of living. In fact, that prices have gone up. There were more formal language, but that was so far so good. I'm accurate?
Yes.
So this week you are asking for $33,677.16 for those three locations. And I don't see a difference between those two. So could you please clarify the difference between what you presented last week and what you're presenting this week?
Right. So the, I'm not sure if you have the correct document in front of you. So the agenda bill was modified as well as the contract modification agreement to reflect only the new location additions. So the increase of the service, service costs that were negotiated and requested as part of the previous Public Works Committee meeting and the study session were taken off of that, but the three location costs remain as new, new adds to the contract.
I downloaded this at 3:45 p.m. Has there been an update since 3:45 p.m.?
No, there has not. You show on, on your copy the $26,470.08.
I do not. I show, it says updated on the agenda bill, so.
Take a moment to get on the same page and
Literally.
Whether we're so under fiscal, if you're indulgenced, Councilmember Mokler, under fiscal impacts on the agenda bill cover sheet, I see $33,677.16.
That's what I see too.
And there's the addendum contract, which the con, the addendum contract shows $26,470.08.
Can you tell me what page?
In our packet, page 74.
I'm on page 73.
Thank you.
So this will be $7,000 less, more or less than the original cost of living increase.
That's correct.
And all of the basis for that is, is here? Could you explain the basis for the increase if it's not just a cost of living increase?
It, it's the three locations as, as noted in the, in the attachments of additional site maintenance. Our station two at 880 a month. Our station three, 845 per month. And the 606 apartments at 295 per month.
Aren't these the same, I'm so sorry, Mr. Motner, to interrupt you. Please go on.
Nope, that's it.
Aren't these the same figures that we looked at last week?
They, they are. So this, this agenda bill and contract modification is exactly the same except tick, we removed the negotiated service cost increase for all locations from Mr. John Song's previous requests. So these, these were always within the agenda.
So sorry to interrupt you. Have you finished so I can try not to be rude again?
Yes.
Okay. So this is what we looked at last week, except no cost of living increase.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy. Thank you. Mr. Motner, we had two public comments about the 606 building and the landscaping there. I'm assuming that we own the land and there's a possible leasehold, but could you respond to those comments and what kind of contractual duties are under?
Right. So the, the 606 Burwell Street Landscape Maintenance Services, the justifications for that is after the agreement reviews by city staff in the 606 apartment building management, it was realized that the city was responsible for agreement for maintenance to the landscape areas around that property. So just to be clear, it isn't only the 606 apartments. It's the city owns the parking level below that as well as the next level below that, as well as the Park Avenue Plaza Garage, which is the cinema parking as well as paid parking.
Sure. Thanks for that. And just for further clarification, was that agreement made at the sale of the 606 buildings? Is there any way to modify that agreement or is that in perpetuity?
I'm not positive on that. I can get what's legal and check into that. But for the agreement of managed, the new management of 606 apartment building did not want to continue providing that service themselves.
Excellent. And the city already agreed to those terms. That's, that, that agreement was already effectuated. Is that right? Okay. Great. Thanks so much.
Any other council member for comment or question? Then yes, then we'll do another round and go back to Councilmember Mokler.
Anyone wishes to precede me?
If I saw my hands, you're on the floor.
Okay. I would suggest that we, because here the, the document that I'm looking at is exactly the same amount that we looked at last week. So I'm still rather confused because the fiscal impact is the fiscal impact and they are the same. Is there a chance that these could be? Is this a matter of great pith and moment that cannot wait for two weeks? That's my real question, my real first question.
Right. And, and I apologize, this was a late add that was presented to the council president. And after quick and thorough legal review of the contract modification agreement change as well as the agenda bill change, it was added, but apparently wasn't added thoroughly with council. So I apologize for that.
Can I just, as I understand it, the contract that's presented is correct, but the fiscal impacts in the agenda bill, it mistakes, misstates, I'm sorry, the amount, but the amount's 20, it's a little over $26,000, right? So there's no CPI increase. It's just the three new sites that are getting landscape maintenance. So the, the contract itself that would be executed is correct.
And Councilmember Mokler, through indulgence, can I ask Attorney, City Attorney Fennell, is there any issue with the cover sheet having the fiscal impact? We're, we're voting on the contract, which is correct. Go for it.
I think that, I think the contract is clear, as long as the council knows what they're voting on. So in, in this case, it was originally presented with an agenda bill with one figure. There was discussion. The actual contract was amended. That was included in your packet. That's why the figure on page 74 is different than the figure in your agenda bill. So because of the discussion that's taken place, things have changed. There's been a modification. As long as you, as, as long as everyone is in agreement that they are voting on what is attached and not what is in the agenda bill and that that's clear, you can move forward.
Thank you. Educated yet again by Attorney Fennell. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Motner. Appreciate you standing up here and going through all of this. You have a good evening. I have no further, nothing further to say on this matter.
And seeing, oh, sorry, there's a hand, Councilmember Chamberlain, please go ahead.
Okay, so I guess I'm just kind of doing the numbers now too. I mean, I, I saw the discrepancy, then I saw it fixed down below, but maybe y'all can help me understand. I mean, when I do the math on it, we got eight, I mean, is there tax that I, is there a tax line item I'm not seeing? So 880 plus 845 plus 295 is 2295 is 2020 times 12, 2424, 24,240. So you said it was, the, the contract modification was 26,470.08. My
Right. Can I approach the council bench, please?
Yeah. Please do. Well, I just did everything times 12 and I can't, okay, there we go. 92% tax, bada bing bada boom, there we go. And so that 23
Sorry to ask this, that ended the mic. Thank you.
The 23,413 was from a different modification. This is a previous modification, not the current modification. Got it. And is there any point in time that we can? I mean, you know, Counselor Dennehy mentioned in, in perpetuity, but is there any, at any point in time that we can go back and talk to 606 about renegotiating that arrangement or situation? I don't know. Maybe that's not a question you can even answer. Maybe that's somebody else.
I'm unaware of that. I'm not responsible for that part of a
Yeah.
contract with, you know, a building owner or a
Maybe that's something we should be asking legal.
And that's, yeah, let's keep it germane to the contract right before us.
Okay. Well, the contract right before us is regarding an increase, like we're adding 606. So this is germane respectfully to, to be curious about the contract, Council President.
Sorry, it's just a discussion of future work by Public Works. If you have a question on how the contract pertains to the current payments. And, I'm sorry. Are you, you still have the floor, Councilmember Chamberlain?
I suppose that is all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennehy.
Yeah, not to overstep City Attorney Fennell's work, but I, I see you're talking over there. My understanding of contracts is you would need new considerations. So whenever that contract
Councilmember Dennehy, sorry, please direct comments to me as council advisor, not to other council members.
Apologies. So it would have to wait until our next contract, but I, I think those public comments are well taken.
Well, thank you. Oh, yes, we'll go to Finance Director Mike Riley.
So, yeah, so Councilmember Dennehy does a great point. We have, we have an agreement with the 606 apartments on top of our facility. When that's up for renewal, I'd looking at that agreement, so I'm taking notes. We'll take a look at the agreement. So it's been noted. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Any other council members for comment? All right, seeing none, just thank you, Mr. Motner, for walking us through this. And from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we went up for a public bid. This was the lowest responsive bidder. And now we've got an even lower price after talking to them. So it sounds like a great bargain for the city. All right. Yes, great. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I will call for the question.
Right. Yes. Dennehy?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 6B, Acceptance of Washington State Department of Commerce Local and Community Projects Program Grant for the Bremerton Library HVAC Replacement Project. Chris Motner is again the presenter.
Welcome back, Mr. Motner.
Good evening again. I am here to present the Department of Commerce Grant Approval for the Bremerton Library HVAC System. The downtown Martin Luther King Library has an old, problematic and inadequate heating system and has no cooling and very little ventilation to the building. This grant will cover the project costs for the new HVAC system for heating, cooling and a dedicated outside air ventilation system with filtration. In late 2021, the city in coordination with the city's lobbyist, Brian McConahey, met to discuss the possibility of applying for a legislative grant and decided to proceed with the 2022 Legislative Session Local Community Project Grant Application. On May 4, 2022, the city received a preliminary award letter from the Department of Commerce for the appropriation of $412,000 for this project. A copy of that letter is included for reference. We have now before you the grant contract that has recently been reviewed by the city legal department and is presented here tonight for council approval. I will answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Motner. And I understand we have representative from the library here and want to give them a chance to present as well if they so wish.
And council members and the mayor. My name is Mike Rose. I'm the Director of IT for and Facilities Management for the Kitsap Regional Library. With me this evening, you all seem to know pretty well, Lisa Lishugid, the Downtown Bremerton Branch Manager. By the way, I'm not a resident of Bremerton. I'm resident, resident of Port Ludlow. I do work in Bremerton. So thank you. First and foremost, the library would like to thank Mr. Motner, the mayor, his, the whole team in Public Works Department and you as well for the ongoing work and support on this project. So we truly do appreciate all that's going into this. Library does have a proud history of supporting the, the Bremerton community with a wide variety of services that we offer to our patrons. Just last year, all across the county, our branches saw over 130,000 visitors into our branches with an average of about 3,000 visitors per month right here in downtown Bremerton. One of the important ways that we serve the population during the hottest part of the year is as designated cooling centers. Unfortunately, of our nine countywide branches, the downtown Bremerton branch has been the only one unable to support that designation as a cooling center. So in, in fact, there are many locations, many occasions during the summer months when we have to shorten our hours, our operating hours at the branch or even remain closed for a day or several days as the heat inside the building just becomes untenable for our staff and the patrons coming to, coming into the building. The project proposed in the item before you this evening with the addition of the proposed HVAC equipment would truly be a welcome gift to the Kitsap Regional Library, our staff and our patrons. The goal is to provide a more effective and efficient conditioning of the air throughout the building, allowing us to remain open during the hottest days of the summer and continue to serve the community when we would otherwise have to close. So on behalf of our library director, our leadership team, our branch staff at the downtown Bremerton branch and the patrons that we serve, we encourage your approval of this project and we thank you for your support.
Thank you so much for presentation.
Sure. This is, as a resident more than a branch manager of Bremerton, I would like to add that the downtown Bremerton Library is the oldest and first library in Kitsap County. This beautiful 1938 art deco building has secret staircases, beautiful glasswork and still has original tiles and hardware. Patrons share stories of growing up in this branch. They bring their kids, they check out books, they use computers and they print in fax for free and are welcomed by friendly staff, often by name. The city of Bremerton dedicated this building to Martin Luther King Jr. in 2007. This building is meaningful to the library staff and to Bremerton residents alike. And investments like this in our community preserve the building and all the good things that happen in it for the future. Thank you.
Thank you all for your presentations. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Checking any on Zoom? Would you have one hand? Yes, Mr. Cameron, please go ahead.
Hello again, council. I just wanted to say, full disclosure, I am a trustee for the Kitsap Regional Library. But as a resident, I want to echo Lisa's sentiments. The Martin Luther King Library has a unique historical value and the staff down there really do a great job of serving the community, a very diverse community at that. And as our ongoing climate change issues continue, this is definitely a necessity. As a business owner downtown, we're literally not even two blocks away from the Kitsap Regional Library. It, it just serves that area. And it's just, it's just the, the staff are wonderful. The library is wonderful. And we're in full support, supporting this endeavor here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the council for a motion. Councilmember Chamberlain.
Okay, thank you. Moved to approve the local and community project Move to approve the Local and Community Project Programs Grant from the State of Washington Department of Commerce for the Library HVAC Project and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second, we're open for discussion. Member Chamberlain, please go ahead.
Super excited to get free money to improve a building in the downtown core and make it accessible to people in the heat with climate change happening. And with everything, you know, that building is old. I love that building and looking forward to see more, more improvements on that structure itself. But I really appreciate that y'all brought up the point about it being a, you know, needing to have air conditioning and, and being a service, a resource for the community. So way to get that money, thank you.
Councilmember Mockler?
Thank you. I'd like to give a shout out to Leslie Dogs and the Audit Committee, who originally announced this, what, three years ago, two years ago? Yeah, in the, in the before times. So this was a really excellent outcome, and I love that downtown Bremerton Library. I am a library geek, and I don't think I've met a library where the people were both so intelligent and so kind. It's, it's a lovely space, and Mr. Motner, every time you have presented on this, you get a goofy smile on your face too. So I think this is a project that everybody is excited about. How often does that happen? Can we applaud briefly?
I will allow a quick applause.
I'd be happy to go.
Thank you, Councilmember Mockler. Councilmember Dennehy, I saw your hand up, no, okay, Councilmember Frye?
Yes, I hope that Mr. Motner didn't give you any indication that we had further questions or were really taking a hard look at this. We, we really, we put it on general business so that we could acknowledge you, you and your work. And as a grandmother of two little kids, we spend a lot of time at the library. And I did as well when I was growing up. It's, it's something, and yet you've evolved over time. So kudos to all that you do. And yeah, let's make this happen again, Mr. Motner. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right, well, let me just echo the thanks to you, Mr. Motner, and Public Works for getting this grant money for our local, one of our local libraries. Again, thank you so much to the library. I was there this morning with my two-year-old son Max at one of the many fantastic free programs you offer for, I believe it's baby story time. So it's really nice to have all those free programs in our community. All right, seeing and hearing no further discussion, I call for the question.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item six C, Public Works Agreement with Utter Associates Incorporated for Audio Visual Equipment Design and Install at Bremerton Municipal Court. The presenter tonight is Judge Flood and Court Administrator Jennifer Johnson.
Welcome, Judge and Administrator Johnson, please take it away.
Good evening. As we presented at the study session, we're here to get approval to move forward with the Public Works Agreement with Utter and Associates and in the amount of $124,905.66. As previously stated, there are some grant funds from ALC, which amounts to $50,000 per courtroom. The request is in essence to make sure that if there's contract overage, that you're well aware of what that would be, and asking to make sure that we have what we need to make sure each courtroom is well equipped and functioning for the level that it needs to be. The AV and media grant, total amount is $100,000. The contract amount is $124,000. The period in time is 21 weeks. The, as previously explained, the ALC grant billing and funds need to be in by June 30th of 2023, and that is their fiscal year end. We are anticipating that there could possibly be some additional funds that come in, and we will know that around May. But in order to move forward and maximize the amount of funds that we do have currently available, we are asking for your approval at this time.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Check for any hands on Zoom. Yes, I see one, Mr. Cameron. Please go ahead, Mr. Cameron, if you're able. Give it one more second here, if you're able to hear us. Maybe possible if his hand's still up from the previous motion.
Sorry about that, council. I apologize for speaking so much this evening. I just wanted to again give my support to the Bremerton Court system and to Judge Flood. In her short time as judge, some miraculous things have been done, and the direction in which the Bremerton Court is going in regards to being inclusive with youth and adults and other organizations is really impactful. So I just wanted to say I'm full supportive of this.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'll go to the council for a motion. Councilmember Dennehy?
I'd move, move to approve the Public Works Agreement with Utter, sorry, is that Utter? Yeah, Utter Associates Incorporated, incorporated in the amount of $124,905.66 and authorize the Bremerton Municipal Court to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Second?
All right, we have a motion in a second, we're open for discussion. Councilmember Dennehy?
Just a thank you for continuing to get as many grant dollars into the municipal court for upgrades as possible. I know we talked about in study session, the need for AV, especially around folks that might be out of state and the cost associated with that and their criminal record, so thank you for this.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Okay, thank you. So I'm taking a look, thank you Judge Flood for bringing this to us. We talked about this at our study session. Can you remind me, did we ever talk about this in public safety? Was this one of the grants that you applied for and you came to our? Okay, can you remind me of the, do you remember the month that you brought that to us? By chance, Jennifer, do you by chance, I don't know if y'all.
It would have been probably June or July. So these are all grants from last summer. They all went into effect July 1st, all of the grants that we talked about, as well as the information in regards to the period in time and the acceptance. So I believe I spent maybe four, five meetings with you last summer talking about grants and in the public safety meetings as well.
And so I am curious about, so it's not a very large amount for our general fund. However, I guess I'm just like for all departments, if there's going to be, and I appreciate you coming to us ahead of time before, instead of afterwards saying, oh, our grant money, you know, our grant cycle timing ran out, so now we, you know, we're in a, we're in a pickle. So you're coming to us ahead of time to let us know about this. And so one of the questions I had asked is, so you're anticipating the ALC funding? Now, is this ALC funding tied, is it already, is that application already in and done?
So the money is already granted? The $100,000 is our money.
And so, but if we don't, if, well, I say we, but it's, it's, sorry, sorry about that. If, if your crew doesn't finish the work before August, no, no, before June 30th, which is the end of the state cycle, correct? Then we are on the hook for the, a little less of the D.
So that's a combination of a answer that I have to give you. There are certain things that the ALC grant anticipate needs to happen. So we know that the cleanup can't happen. So that, that's where you see I'm putting in the amount of the $7,900 because they will pay that, bill that for the grant funds, as well as all of the equipment, so.
Even if it's after that timeline? Even if it's after June 30th or before, it all has to be before June 30th?
So it's something that they will accept as a part of their reimbursement before the June, by, I'll put it this way. Whatever bills we submit to them on the June 30th date, that is the last day to submit something to them, and they will pay all of that. And it's anticipated that cleanup is a reasonable expense to bill. What the issue and what we're looking at is labor. We can't bill that labor that may be running into about 27 days or, there's so many hours that would happen after that June 30th date for labor. But again, we won't, we're putting forward to you what we believe will be the anticipated cost. Those costs could be reduced, but it would not exceed what we're giving.
Great. So that 7,900 could or could not happen, I mean, that's a really small amount. So I don't even know that I'm worried about it, but it sounds like if the cleanup is done after June 30th, you can still bill it to the ALC, is that what I heard you say?
They're accepting that upfront.
Okay.
As a reasonable cost.
But because it's estimated it's taking 21 weeks.
There will be labor.
And so. Okay. Can I ask briefly some of the benefits of having this additional AV equipment installed? One of the things you mentioned, I believe, was that we have an additional calendar that would this, would this support the hybrid meetings with the additional calendar of like, let's say, the various interpreted services that you provide? Is that one of the benefits of this as well?
So the benefits overall is that it's been since 2010, since there's been any upgrades to the courtroom. The upgrades are needed because we've now upgraded in technology and how we actually have hearings. We are in somewhat of a hybrid way of having hearings for access. And this access to justice is an issue across all state courts. And when you think about how we do services, we don't do services like we did 15 years ago. This AV equipment and media equipment brings us up to date. And that was one of the reasons why the state allowed for the funds to come in the form of grants for courtrooms because there's so many courtrooms, particularly ours, that hasn't had funding to be able to make the upgrades, get the equipment to meet the needs that we currently experience. We run Oak Courts, we run Laserfish, we run JIS, we also have the Zoom. So we're running four to five different on top of me trying to be, on email when things come in from the city attorney's office that may have not gotten in before the calendar or there's a piece of information that I need to review. So these are multiple screens and the systems that we have crash a lot.
Okay, that, yeah.
Stall a lot, and so.
I was going to ask how about new soft, because there is a lot of new software this year that's different than other years. And so, so how's it running on the new equipment that you have? You say it crashes often, this is something you're experiencing. And so I kind of was just hoping to highlight some specifics that would be a benefit from this additional funding, which might include, you know, if you're talking about everything crashing, the hybrid meetings, the Zoom meetings, do those crash while you're in the middle of them?
There's been times where we haven't been able to get on for years.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I guess I don't have any other questions for this. I think if it's done sooner than 21 weeks, then we're, then we don't need to be on the hook for the 47K as, you know, from the general fund. But since it's estimated it's taking this long, that's what this is for. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any other council members for comment or questions? Seeing none, I think I just have one, which is kind of more for Finance Director Riley. So right now, it's scheduled to come out of the general fund. And I just have to ask the, the question of, is there any wiggle room in the court's budget itself? If this, in the worst case scenario, that not everything's covered that could come out of?
So what, yeah, so what you're authorizing is an amendment to the general fund for the, you know, worst case scenario. We'll work closely with the court. They are looking at additional grant funding that could tie to this project. And we'll also look through their budget, if there's areas, they did budget for some AV improvements within the existing budget to try to lessen the impact. We will consider the amendment at mid-year or year end, depending how it's looking. So we won't just bring something at mid-year if we don't need to. So it might be something you won't see till year end to do the actual amendment to the court's budget, so.
Fantastic. And just thinking across the city on parity, so these, it's 13 years since 2010, this has been upgraded. I know we've had recent upgrades in this room during the pandemic on AV equipment. And I'll go to also IT Director Mike Riley. Give a broad sense of across the city and different departments, you know, how old audio visual equipment is on average? You know, that's a tough one.
So luckily I got Dave Sorenson here, our IT manager, who actually worked with the court during COVID and doing our virtual, virtual courts, installed with there currently and has a good history with the building. And all over the city, they do, they kind of do a lot of the work that's out there for AV and try to support that. But so we have a pretty good pulse, I will say, with that court facility, the sound system, when we purchased the building, that building was lacking, didn't put something in there again. It was in-person court with, with the pandemic, came in, put some, put some technology to use with the owl and getting it where it is, but it definitely is due for an upgrade if we're continuing in the, this new, this new virtual court setting. So David, do you want to add anything?
It came down to, we had upgraded like one room prior to this one since 2010. And that's up in community development. So the rest of them, when we did the court, there was no money left for the sound system. So the sound system in there was actually brought from the courthouse, the temporary courthouse, before this one was put into place. So it all comes down to it, it's the oldest, and this is the newest. And the difference between that is at least 10 years.
All right, thank you for that clarification. All right, thank you for your presentation, Judge. I have no further comments, questions, and seeing and hearing none there, I will go ahead and call for the question.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. That concludes general business.
Thank you. All right, well, now move on to council reports. And since this is the first council meeting of the month, we'll start with District One, Councilmember Jennifer Chamberlain.
Good, good evening. Hey, folks, can you bring up the slides? This time I'm serious, I have slides for the first time. So I'll try to make it quick. I just want to highlight some parks in our area, and I might do this from time to time. I'm on a park a day, personal initiative for mental wellness, for health, for just, just, you know, to appreciate the parks and hopefully bring some folks along with me. I brought several people with me on some of these walks too. So this one, I'm going to start off, this is in Council District Two, not in my district. I'm, full disclosure, this is in Councilmember Frye's district, Madrona Trails. Now, some of the pictures are just, they're just pretty woodsy pictures, right? But there's some really nice things about this, or this trail has had a lot of work done on it. I know there's a Friends of Madrona Trail stewardship program. They have these beautiful signs that I just learned, apparently were a birthday gift from Josh Farley's wife. She got him these wayfinding signs for the trails. It's just beautiful. When I first went on these trails, it just looked like I was accidentally on some property behind the hospital. And now they're just gorgeous, so I highly encourage you to visit Madrona Trails and check it out. They've done some really lovely work. Next slide. Okay, here's my area, this is my little, my, my favorite little, little jewel here, Stephenson Canyon. Upper left-hand corner, I went with my friend, who was not photographed, and found a couple of moms with their little people just playing down in the water at the canyon, just a lovely moment. At the bottom there, you'll see me standing between that invasive English ivy that's always encroaching on our parks. There's a little hidden waterfall, if you, well, it's off trail, so, but it's there. And then in the, underneath where it says canyon, there's a couple of things I want to show, and it's really hard to see, maybe you can see better on your screens, councilmembers. I got a better picture of our new outflow. There, I don't know, yeah, these are just photos from my phone, so they're not going to be the best. But it just looks, it looks more beautiful in person than it does in this picture. They did a really nice job of creating this, like, you know, it creates a larger space for outflow. And then they planted some shrubs and bushes around. It just, it's looking nice. I know the work isn't all the way done, but when it is done and in the springtime, it's going to look lovely over there. And then below that picture is a picture of the rubble that we talked about getting cleaned up over on Lewis. I can't remember the name of the court over there, but it is a mess. So it'll be nice to see that area cleared up. Because it's not just that pile there, there's several piles of just metal and concrete. And then I wanted to point out the stairs. Okay, so there's a little bit, most of the area in Stephenson Canyon has those lovely stairs. There's a point down, there's a couple of scramble roots, but it's just a really magical place. Find it, check it out. There's seven trailheads, I believe. So you can go in at almost any central point of the city over there on the other side of the bridge. So let's go to the next slide. I'll try to zoom through and not take up too much time. Lent Landing, okay. So this is the little, I call it the gazebo park. So I'm going to do a shameless plug here, the top right-hand corner during COVID. When I finished my master's degree, I couldn't go to graduation, but I was able to do a, you know, an online graduation and my son, this is our graduation, my graduation. My sons hooded me. I kind of, you know, it's a beautiful space. You can actually walk at low tide from the beach side of Lent Landing, I talk about it a lot, to Lions Park. There's a couple of shots at dusk. And then I just wanted to show you, I mean, this is graffiti, like, you know, like, it's, but I loved it. And I just want to show it to you, it's, some of the words say, "Do your homework, listen to your mama." And "You make my mind bloom." Just some kind of positive graffiti. I know it's graffiti, but I just wanted to share it, I like it. So we'll go to the last slide. Okay, Lions Park. So I, you know, I don't have a picture of the ballparks this time, but I do have a picture of low tide. Low tide is a really special time to go to Lions Park. You can see so much more of it. And it has this beautiful landscape you can walk out onto. And you can explore all these, you know, these things that you wouldn't normally see at a regular time of day. Right now, low tides are coming in around nine thirty, ten thirty at night, so you got to wait for a few more days. Oh, and I just learned that the docks was called the Coal Docks? Is that what we called them? I guess I didn't even know that till recently. So the other two pictures here on the right-hand side is a project that Public Works has talked about. And I went and investigated it and did a little scrambling up on those rocks. And it really is broken, that really does need some help. And that's the outflow at the end of Lebo. I don't know if it's Lebo or Tracyton and Sheridan. And the whole pipe is cracked and crumbling. So I just wanted to show you a picture of that up close and personal. And that's all I have for slides, except I did want to do a quick shout out to Mayor Wheeler, who I learned walks fourteen thousand steps a day, which is about the equivalent of six miles. So I'll give you an update. I worked really hard today to do this. It took me seven different walks, by the way, because I just, you know, you got a section up. But, but I got to it. I am today at fourteen, and this isn't to compete, this is just what happened. Fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two steps. But I have a weekly average, you know, there's an outlier though, because I did that Dungeon and Spit trip, the outlier. But, but my average is nine thousand, sixty-three. And so I don't think I can get fourteen thousand every day, that's six miles. That's two hours of walking for me at three miles an hour. So props to Mayor Wheeler for, for walking that much. I hope to be more like you when I grow up. All right, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we'll go to District Two, Councilmember Denise Frye.
I don't have any slides. I just want to share, it was really a week of where collaboration and coming together was a, was a big deal. Oh, we, oh, those, oh, boy, Lori. You know, I'll make it part of my report. I heard that, is it Captain Plum? Captain Plum, Randy? If you're watching, Randy, joke's on you, buddy. The last one, that, that police officers at Bremerton often participate in community events. And when I ran the YWCA, we had an event called Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. And there were four, three or four officers that would come. There's Randy on the right. And they wore these high heels for, for a mile, walked around in them, you know, in their, in their workout clothes or whatever, were great sports. And, you know, got a lot of teasing because of it. But Randy, these are now, these photos that I had taken at the event are now owned by the city. So they will haunt you, my friend. But certainly I, I wish, and I'm sure everybody that's worked with Randy Plum over the years, good cop, really good cop, and, and very much a part of his community. So I'll miss you and, and look forward to hearing about your exploits. So besides those photos that I sent in, Mills Crossing, of course, I'm not going to, I promise you, I'm going to stop talking at some point about how excited I am about this project. But the mayor and Councilmember Mokler and I got to have a tour of it the other day. And, and these are built, they were built to be sold as condos. And so the quality of, of these, these buildings, of these living spaces is absolutely incredible. I would be honored to live in a place that nice. My favorite part, single garage that a single mom can come into with three or four kids, close that garage door, be secure, get into her house, absolutely love that. So much about this project, but it's all about collaboration. These, these organizations have been meeting for years around homeless issues and affordable housing. And so when the opportunity presented itself, it, it really, it really came about. And then I also saw the mayor and President Coughlin. I think it was last night, wasn't it last night, at the PAC meeting, a police and community get-together? And can I just make, I, I really love the way you run meetings, President Coughlin. But I love meetings that preachers run. I mean, I, I don't know the Reverend, but, but, or the pastor, but he did a great job of facilitating that meeting. And it was wonderful to see our law enforcement with much of our leadership of color there in that room and all friends, all, all getting along, working through some tough, some tough things were shared. Police chiefs from all over the county were there, listening to people, talking to people. And it was, it felt really good. Just wanted to give you my perception about that, all about working together. So shout out to Josh Farley, Madrona Trails, Be There or Be Square, Sunday, February twenty-sixth, ten AM at Madrona Trails. Fern Day, we're going to learn a lot about ferns, hopefully get involved with the work that's going on there that is really vast majority volunteer-led, community-led. Shout out to the Parks Department and Public Works for the roles that they play in that too. That's it.
All right, thank you. Next we'll go to District Four, Councilmember Quinn Dennehy.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to give a big shout out to our legislative staff for putting together and putting on our joint session. And a big shout out to President Coughlin for running it in a very efficient manner. I think there's a lot of work that our legislative staff does to make sure that not only we are performing our jobs very well, but ensuring that liability doesn't run towards the city and pretty much everything in between there. So again, I want to just thank you for that. And then I just had a point of order question, is, are there time limits for council member reports?
Five minutes, yeah, and I'm tracking on my time, right?
Perfect, thanks a lot.
All right, next up we'll go to District Six, oh, sorry, District Five, Councilmember Michael Goodnow.
Yeah. One thing I'll kind of give a heads up to is we'll be meeting on February twenty-fourth on the slide next.
Thank you. Next, Council, District Six, Councilmember Anna Mokler. Who will also time as I do as well.
Good evening. Could I have the first slide, please? Hey, thank you. So it's a, it's, it's not a granular report like the rest of you did, it's more matter, but hey. This is a photo I like of District Six, it's my intro photo, next slide, please. So every second Monday from four to six, thank you, Public Works at one hundred Oyster Avenue Bay, Oyster Bay Avenue North is a town hall. The next theme is Help the Vulnerable. Thank you, Tony Ives, for agreeing to, to speak there. I, the tentative title for the March Town Hall will be How to Complain, Bada. I'm going to move on to the, the rest of the thing, so you're welcome to take the slide down, please. So tonight's council report is on transparency and equity. People of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the rights to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. People insist on remaining, remaining informed so that they may maintain control over the instruments that they've created. That's the preamble to the Washington Public Records Act, against which many people have often invaded. City Council represents the people who live in Bremerton. It's our responsibility to keep them informed. They may not be interested, that doesn't matter. Information has to be readily available. There's a great deal of information on our city website. It's tracking it down that can be tricky. I'll be working hard this year to educate myself on how to find out everything that's out there so that I can be of use to my constituents. So here's an example. Public Works has plans for the upcoming year. I'm picking Public Works because I'm on the committee. What, when, how, and where they plan to repair, replace, maintain, or install streets, sidewalks, sewers, outfalls, water lines, et cetera. I will work to learn to where to find all of that information, to be a resource to others. And of course, you know, this is the plan. There's going to be overruns, there's going to be cancellations, there's going to be emergencies. Permitting will be delayed or will suddenly arrive. That's, perfect human endeavors are pretty darn rare. So to segue from transparency to equity with another example. How does Public Works decide what street work they will do in the coming year? The director has said that they are guided for street work, much street work, by the IMS study, also known as the twenty eighteen pavement analysis report. Well, this report states that the least expensive plan to maintain a network of roads in very good condition is because, quote, "Pavements typically deteriorate rapidly once they hit a specific threshold." That's page two of the IMS. Public Works staff have often said that this is their priority. With this as their guide, I don't know to what extent, but I do know that a major project in twenty twenty-three is rebuilding and resurfacing Belfair Valley Road. The fact is, and if you're walking around Bremerton or driving around, you know this is a fact. Many, many older residential streets are not in very good condition. They're routinely passed over in favor of the newer streets, which follow the IMS recommendations, right? You catch them before they start to deteriorate at all. In my opinion, we should prioritize these residential streets. They've been neglected for many, many years. Doing it as Public Works does, it means that them that's got shall have and them that's not shall lose. Public Works prioritizes road condition over road users. And that's how it's working out. Is there any malevolent intent here? Oh, heck no. It's just, this is how, it's, these are the results of it. And I'd like to offer right away my sincere apologies to the very hardworking people at Public Works and Utilities, if this sounds at all critical, because it's not meant to be so. They are MacGyvers to the nth degree. They put a great deal of time and energy into maintaining our infrastructure, planning it and doing it, coming home exhausted. I see these people in their trucks in the afternoon, they're just like, ugh. And they are often covered in unpleasant substances. It's a tough job. And it's our job as council, I think, to look at how all that hard work shakes out to serve the people of Bremerton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll go to District Six. With respect to Mayor, maybe that's a sidebar conversation to have. It's a little unorthodox, but if it's, if you can keep it brief, I don't want to have a back and forth here. This is just a time for council members to give their thoughts. I'll give you, I'll give one minute here on the clock.
Thank you. So I, you know, I just wanted to let you all know, I, I only do ten to twelve thousand steps a day. So I, fourteen thousand's wonderful, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure you, you knew that part. So thank you, Counselor Chamberlain. I, you know, I don't like taking credit where it's not due, so I appreciate it.
I was knowing about that and not Public Works.
I have a bit of a point of order real quick.
Next, please, yes, point of order.
Point of order. I would like to say he did tell me on the phone it was fourteen thousand.
All right. District Seven, Councilmember Eric Younger.
First of all, Council President, would you like to start the clock? Because you know how verbose.
To be fair, I will, but I have, I don't doubt, I will need to use it. Five minutes, starting now.
All right. And then also, I'm demanding a full investigation on this steps thing, if it's twelve thousand or fourteen thousand. I think we should allocate taxpayer money and figure out what the true answer is. Okay, enough of the funny business. So I would like to say thank you to the Parks and Public Works Department. We had ongoing complaints about the lack of a gate at Lower Nad Park for safety and security purposes. And I'd like to thank both Public Works and Parks for coordinating that work effort and getting that gate in. So that's on a serious note. Also, on a serious note, if you're in District Seven, you're a resident or a business and you have something you'd like to get done in your district, that's what I'm here for. So please send an email to me at the city council's office and I'll try to address your concerns. With that, I've got another like three and a half minutes.
Three minutes, fifty-four seconds.
Now, can we bank this? Just kidding. With that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to give myself the same five minutes, I hope not to use it all. My report, I just got a couple of slides here as well. Perfect, usual welcome business. Two new businesses to downtown I want to welcome, which is Grumble and Wine, shown there on the right. And credit to the, Megan Reed, the kid's up sun for that photo. There's a recent article on them. And on the left is the Bremerton Mercantile at the corner of Pacific and Fourth, which is great to, great to see open and vibrant. So welcome to both of those businesses. Next slide. Max got a new stuffed animal. And also, although this is not a new business, in fact, quite old, I think it counts to welcome, welcome as a new business to the district, considering that just the other week, there was a celebration of the nonprofit Roxy Foundation buying the building. And so I think that's a new chapter to celebrate. So congratulations to Councilmember Michael Goodnow, who is the director there on a lot of hard work that it took to get that going. Next slide. And then, yes, as Councilmember Frye mentioned, went to the PAC meeting last night. I believe it was the first one in person since the pandemic. And I just want to really commend Pastor Johnson for getting everybody together and moderating the mayor for being there and answering some questions, as well as our police chief, Tom Wolf. I thought did an excellent job of talking to folks and answering questions and concerns. And I just thought it was a wonderful way to have everyone in the same room, be heard and, and deal with some, with some tough issues. And I look forward to more of them. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that. And also a bittersweet goodbye to Captain Plum as well. I talked to the chief earlier and almost thirty years of service with the city. bittersweet goodbye to Captain Plum as well. I talked to the chief earlier and almost thirty years of service with the city. And I know quite a well-liked and respected officer. So Captain Plum, thank you for your, your service to the city. And last slide I have is a big thank you to everybody, all the department heads, the mayor, Judge Flood and Court Administrator Johnson, fellow council members for coming to the retreat this weekend. I thought we had a, a very productive discussion, and there's never enough time to tackle every single issue in a city besides a Bremerton. But I thought we made some fantastic progress that we'll, we'll keep, keep working on and wanted to give a special shout out, yes, to council staff for all their hard work and making this come together, including managing all the, the reservations at the Gold Mountain Country Club. The hard work that goes into planning that out to where, how everything's arranged and seating and getting, getting everybody with busiest schedules to line up on the same day on a Saturday to spend their Saturday out there working on city business. So thank you very much for that. And I just thought it was a great meeting. And that's it for the, for that. That's it for my report. Council and I will now convene for an executive session for forty-five minutes to discuss, quote, potential impending litigation items per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten subsection, one subsection, subsection I, and action is anticipated. We will adjourn until then.
Boarding in progress.
All right. Yes. All right, we will wait one minute while Council Frye rejoins. All right, I call, I call the regular meeting back to order, and I call upon the city attorney to summarize the action before council.
This is an action for the council to approve a settlement. And the proposed motion is that the council moved to approve settlement with Sergeant Kelly Mead in substantially the same terms as indicated in the CR two A agreement executed one twenty-three, twenty-three, and authorize the mayor to execute any additional documents necessary to affect the same.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? We have no one left in chambers, and is there anybody still left on Zoom? Okay, seeing no public members left, I'll go to the council for a motion. Councilmember Dennehy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Mokler. We have a motion and a second. I call for the question.
Mokler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Go back to the city attorney or to defer to a council member for another motion. I believe, Councilmember Dennehy.
I'm also going to make a motion. I'm going to move to authorize the city attorney to initiate and pursue any necessary litigation and take any other necessary action to abate any and all nuisances and code violations on property located at sixteen twenty-one and sixteen twenty-three, Fourth Street in Bremerton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mokler. There's a motion and a second. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the council for the motion. I'm sorry, I called it. Seeing no public comment, I called the question.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. The next study session will be held here in the first floor meeting chambers next Wednesday, February eighth, beginning at five PM with a remote option as well. That concludes tonight's regular council business. Meeting is adjourned.